We will start with a roll call. And for our new members, you just state your name and whether you're a full member or an alternate member.
George Lavash, full member.
Zachary Schneider, alternate.
Laura Gandia, full member.
Al Gilbo, full member.
And welcome to our newest two board members, so thank you. All right. She has on her board. We could do election of offices today.
All right.
All right, so we have to do elections of offices before we go. The current slate of offices where I was chair, I was vice chair, and John Brunel was clerk. Does anybody have any interest in serving in any of those positions? Or want to make a motion or nominate?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Laura as chair.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I oppose, and I will abstain. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Al Gilbo as vice chair.
Okay. Second that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And Al, you'll abstain from that, or you can vote for yourself.
I'll abstain.
So, any of our two new members interested in being?
Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, I'll do it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you abstain from voting.
I abstain from voting.
Yeah. Anybody interested in being clerk, or we can hold off on that particular position until?
I'd like to hear more about it before I say anything.
I would not be interested.
Okay, so we'll hold off on that position, we won't do anything with that one now? Is that okay with you, Al?
Yeah.
All right. So we do have a full agenda tonight, but I did receive a request to continue, so I would like to take some things out of order, just to go through the continuance. So we do have two rehearing cases. And we have case number 09182023-1 and case number 09182023-2. Case number one, the name of the applicant is Vernisha Bouchard Hannan at 446 Charles Bancroft Highway. Case number two is Rosie Medina, 442 Charles Bancroft Highway. Those were cases that were on the agenda tonight to allow parking in the Northern Commercial District where it is not permitted use. I received today email communications from, it looks like both of those applicants have retained counsel. I have an email from a Sean R. Dumfry Esquire from Cronin, Bisson, and Zalinski, and it reads, "Litchfield ZBA, my office represents Vernisha Bouchard Hannan and Rosie Medina in regards to their variance request. We request that the hearings tonight be postponed until next month so that we may supplement the applications. Can we table the application for tonight?" Thank you. And I just want to get the hearing date for next month is? The hearing for next month would be June 17th. Does anybody have any objections to continuing those two cases? All right, anybody want to make a motion to continue those two cases till June 17th?
I'll make a motion to continue those two cases until June 17th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And George, you made that motion?
I made that motion.
Yep.
Did you designate him as a voting member?
I did not, so he will designate you as a voting member. All right. So those two cases, case number 09182023-1 and case number 09182023-2 have been continued until the June 17th meeting. That was George, and Al, you seconded that motion, right?
Yes.
So the next case, the first case on the agenda is case number 07172023-1. It's a variance from LZO Article 310 to construct a building within the 50 feet building setback from a right-of-way in the residential district. This case has been continuous several times, most recently from the April 15th, 2024 meeting. The name of applicant is Leon and Maria Dutton, owner of the property. Leon and Maria Dutton, location of property, 9 Woodhawk Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire, map 8, lot 124. Hello there.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohlman, attorney with Prunia and Prohlman on behalf of the Duttons. And notwithstanding the best efforts of this town to seat a full board of five, we would like to continue the hearing until next month, please.
So for the, thank you. So for the new members, we have had struggles getting a full member board. This case has been continued.
Couple times.
Yes.
A lot of times. The applicant is not, by right, they are not entitled to a full member board, just to be clear. But we typically do grant those requests until we have a five-member board. In the past, I've been not as willing maybe to consider a request for a full member board. But given that we will have a full member board, hopefully, next month, I don't have any objection to continuing it because I think Mr. Perry will be here and we can do that, so I don't know what the feeling of the other board members are.
Can you make a motion? I'm willing to second.
I don't have a role.
Okay. I will make a motion to continue case number 07172023-1 to our June 17th meeting due to lack of a full member board.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
See you next month.
Thank you for your patience.
We tried.
Hi.
Thanks.
The next case is case number 052020-4-1, variance from LZO Article 507, Section 507-04B to construct an ADU of 1,400 square feet when an ADU can be no more than 800 square feet. The name of the applicant is Thoreau Realty Trust. The owner is Renee Thoreau. Location of the property is 311 Charles Bancroft Highway, map 16, lot 6-2. And I do have to recuse myself from this one. You're on.
Oh, you have to recuse yourself?
I'm a recusant.
Why?
Because I have an interest with Renee back in the day, where he donated to a charity that I was on the Board of Directors on.
Do you stand to gain any monetary funds from listening to this?
No, but I have recused, well, I have recused myself in the past for it, so.
Just because, as you know, I mean, I thought we were going to go forward with a four-member board, but now a three-member board.
I know, I mean, I routinely recuse myself from applications involving Renee. So that's going to be.
No, I guess I still like to go forward.
Okay. So do you have this? Do you want to?
Somebody else want to, anybody have to read anything on?
Well, I already read it, so let me just give you.
24-1. Do you guys read off the case, or is it just you looking for me to make a presentation?
I'm sorry. You want to read off the case?
It's case number 05202024-1, variance from LZO, did we already go over this article? Did we already do this, this case?
Yes, you did read it, but I want to read it again, so.
All right. Variance from LZO Article 507, Section 507-0.04B to construct an ADU of 1,400 square feet when an ADU can be no more than 800 square feet. Name of applicant, Thoreau Litchfield Realty Trust, owner of property, Renee Thoreau. Location of property, 311 Charles Bancroft Highway, Litchfield, New Hampshire, 03052, map 16, lot 6-2.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, my name is Tobin Farwell, Farwell Engineering Services. I am here with Renee Thoreau, owner of the property. So, right now, there's an existing garage, a house and garage on the property, and the owner's looking to create an ADU above the garage, but the square footage exceeds what the allowable, the allowable 800 square feet. We did go back and forth with the building inspector determining how they determine the square footage, and the square footage ended up being approximately 1,500 square feet, and that has been clarified with the town. So we are still seeking the expansion from the 800 square feet. So it's our, no additional housing is going to be built, this is merely a finishing off above the garage. So therefore, it won't, there'll be no change in the footprint of the existing building that's there. And I guess, so I believe that the spirit of the ordinance will be met by allowing an ADU. There'll be no, again, no change. Substantial justice will be done, will be allowed for a family use as required by the additional regulations of the town. The value of surrounding properties will not be diminished because of this expansion of the ADU. Little enforcement of the provision of this ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. The garage exists, I guess that he could box out area in order to narrow it down to the 800 square feet, but it doesn't seem to be a reasonable, reasonable action. I don't know if you have any questions. We're hoping that the board receives this favorably. There is a housing problem in town, and this is for a family member who's in a bit of a problem right now. We're coming to the board with hat in hand, see if we can get a little help with this.
So was, I have just one question. When you applied for the permit for the house, for the garage, was that on the permit? That's why it was denied, or did you come back after?
Originally, it was going to be one, but then, recent developments, that's why I come in afterwards.
Okay.
Right, because this was just built, this garage, right?
Right. It was in the last month.
Right, so, when did the garage, so the, the application here is April 12th. When did the garage go up? I mean, so, you were in the middle of constructing the garage, and then you decided to change?
I pulled the permit for the garage a year ago. I was just getting into it this spring. Like I said, some, my parents having some issues, so at the last minute, figured, well, I was going to see if I can house them with us, so.
Anybody have any other questions?
I'm just not sure how often this happens, where, you know, it's new construction.
It doesn't happen too often, but, I mean, to me, it sounds like something that could happen more often in the future. You know?
Each reading their five points, all applicants.
Yeah, yeah. You can read your five points.
Okay, I sort of went through some of them, but it was very, not clear. All right, so here we go. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the building look will not change, and the vehicle access will not change, the footprint will not change. So I don't know how the public interest, you know, what does limiting 800 square feet do for the public? I think that's meant. The spirit of the ordinance observed because an ADU is allowed, but is required to be smaller. This is a modest-sized ADU of reasonable size. The garage currently exists, no new building is proposed. So the spirit of the ordinance being to allow for an ADU, we think it's being met. Substantial justice is done because this will allow for a family use of the ADU. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished because the allowance of an ADU to be 1,400, 1,500 square feet in an existing garage will not diminish surrounding values. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. The garage exists, and it's not reasonable to block off a portion of the area to limit the size. Again, I guess I'm not sure why, why the 800 square feet, what that does. If the criteria of subpar paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owning special conditions of the property that distinguish it from properties in the area. The property currently has a garage on the second floor in excess of 800 square feet.
And just to be clear, this is a detached ADU, correct?
Yeah.
So detached ADU, so this also has to go to the planning board even if you do get the variance, because it's conditional use. If I'm reading that correctly, conditional use permits, detached ADU.
Reasonable attachment? No breezeway? No breezeway? Is there a breezeway?
Anybody see a plan on it?
Do you believe that's conditional use under 507.06?
Yeah.
Most of the?
I think I saw this already, but.
Yeah.
So it just takes up all the space.
Yeah, that's the lower.
So he's got his.
Yeah, it's open garage on the bottom with the upstairs.
I was just reading 507.04, the A through J.
Yeah. That's for an attached ADU. So there are some additional, it is a conditional use to be an attached ADU.
He doesn't have more than two bedrooms, he only has one bedroom. I read through that earlier. Yeah.
Okay.
So, my only concern is, you know, this is almost twice the size.
So we, I think we need to.
Is there any?
We need to go into discussion before we.
Okay, sorry.
Does anybody support?
Yeah. Yeah. Is there anybody from the public who would like to add to the meeting? Okay. Would you like to close public input at this time?
Motion to close public input.
Okay, I second.
Would you like to have a discussion on it?
Sure.
This is significantly larger than the allowable ADU square footage.
I understand the need to house people and everything like that, it's just, are we setting precedent where it's a brand-new structure? Was it always intended to be there? I know it could have happened in the last year. You know, was it designed like this from the beginning? Like I said, it is larger than 800 square feet. I don't know if there's any history with other ADUs that we've approved of this size in town.
You have original plan for the garage in this?
Sorry, the original plan for the garage in the file? We pulled the permit.
Yeah. It was just a, just a garage.
This is from, this is from April 2020.
Yeah, that's from.
But, so when.
I was listening to the meeting.
So this is the original. If it was just a garage, was this, was this just going to be storage space above it?
Well, yeah, I'm just looking to see if there's another plan that has the original date stamped on it.
Exactly. Did you have a plan to submit that should be in the file, not showing the ADU?
Yeah, there was no ADU when I submitted the plan a year ago. I just didn't get around to building.
So is that, can you go look at that plan and see?
That's April 12th.
It's April 12th, 2023.
The same day it's you.
Yeah.
It's April 12th, showing this.
Right.
The building inspector has in his, in his file, when I pulled the permit, it was just a garage. It was just four walls and a roof, and that was it. This was, this was submitted when I made the, when I made the application to turn this upstairs.
Yeah, you know what? It would have to be like that because he didn't get denied the permit, the garage.
When I asked for it, he goes, then he said, well, you have to have it in square feet. I said, okay, well, what do I need to do? He said, well, send me the plans so I can officially deny you so I can have the zoning board. So that's why this was just done on the 12th. But the building, the building itself.
This was, this was last year.
Last year, but this is not. This is not last year.
We get the letter of denial for the permit, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This, I know it's the 23rd, but that's, I just didn't change the date.
Okay.
I just sent this in because he needed a schedule. I'm sorry for the confusion. I just did it for the.
Got you, okay.
Right?
Then I don't care.
But it's on his file last year that this was not shown.
All right.
We should begin. I get the, we have the permit from when you pulled the permit, and we have the.
Day of done with the second.
I had the permit to build last year.
I just don't know, I don't know.
Busy, money.
I don't know what.
Probably got it this year, and then again, like I said, he needs to pass some last time to himself.
Okay.
All good.
So this was never intended to be that way?
No, it's, it's fine.
No, I understand.
You know what I'm saying?
I understand the concern.
My first, you know, first one.
Sure.
Yeah, so if this is not outside of historical precedent, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I just, I don't know what the precedents are.
You closed the session for public?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
What's?
I'm just, I'm just in a butter across the street.
Being that we already closed it, but he came in late, can we?
If the board desires for open public input, you could.
Oh.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to open public input for a person who came in late to the meeting?
I second.
I second.
Okay.
I have been dealing with.
Can you please state your name?
Kevin Lynch, 312 Charles Bancroft Highway. I do know, like, the color gray. I just call it the barn right now. I have no concerns with this at all as an, I've been dealing with zoning all my life, as you all know. What he's done here is, I heard part of the conversation coming up, I was listening to it about the detached and attached.
Yep.
That's simple to solve, but that's not here and there, okay? Put a roof from one building to the other, Renee. But I have no issue, no, I can, I both agree. It's a large piece of land, you could do more out there, in the backside too as well. But he's kept it in the front because it makes sense, and the back, he tries to keep it open. Okay? And I, I have barns built next to me that look just like that. Who's in it, what's in it? This one here is going to be nice. I have no problem with it, I'm just saying it, okay?
Okay.
Would anybody else in the, the audience like to put anything else into it? No? Do we close public input again?
Absolutely.
All right, I make a motion that we close public input?
I'll second.
I guess I don't have anything else.
No more questions on the case.
Okay, would you like to go over late, or go through the case?
To close it, or do I do a vote?
Yeah, we're going to have to close it.
All right. Motion to close, how do we have to vote, though? First?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't.
And it should be clear, obviously, all three of you, in order to have a majority, all three of you have, if you want to be votes in the negative.
We understand.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I don't know the next.
So, we can count.
Okay.
Here's a couple of them. Close public input.
We did.
So now the board should engage in deliberation of the five points to make sure whether those five points.
I mean, I, I think, I think, do you have those right in front of you?
I can pull them up if I need.
Yeah, and then we could go through them, each, one by one.
I have them right here. Okay, so the first point, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the building look will not change and vehicle access will not change. So it's a barn, it's going to stay the same, it's going to look the same, you can't tell from the outside. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because ADU is allowed, but is required to be smaller.
We need, do you want to vote on each one?
Do we have to vote on?
Do you want to vote on each one, or do you want to vote on it all as?
We might as well vote as we go.
Okay.
Okay? So I think, so, do you believe the first fact is?
Contrary to public interest?
I agree.
I agree. Okay, I agree as well. Spirit of the ordinance is observed because ADUs are allowed, they are required to be smaller. This says it's a modest-sized ADU of reasonable size, the garage currently exists, and no new building is proposed. So it's a detached ADU, we allow those. It is larger than expected, but I think the spirit, we do allow ADUs, it is an ADU, so I believe this is met.
I kind of look at this as, you know, the footprint of the existing garage is 1,500 square feet, and to block it off to make 800 square feet of living space and leave 700 square feet as like possible storage or anything is a potential for, you know, anything else to happen up there and without anybody knowing. So I kind of feel like, at least at this point, we know there's an ADU up there and it's 1,500 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Or, I'm sorry, it's 1,400 and?
It's called 1,500.
1,500 square feet. I agree.
Okay. Substantial justice is done. This will allow for their family to use the ADU. So I don't see a problem with the family using this. I think substantial justice is done.
Agreed.
Agreed.
The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. It says the allowance of the ADU to be 1,400 square feet in an existing garage will not diminish surrounding values. We've also just heard from one of the butter that thinks it looks good already and has no problem with it, so I don't think, you know, they don't think their property is diminished, so I think that is met.
Just change the call.
It's closed. This says number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. So, this, they say here, the garage exists and is not reasonable to block off a portion of the area to limit the size, as you just said, Al. And if this is really needed for a family member, you know, this is reducing their hardship on the family.
Absolutely. Then there's A.
I don't think B needs to be there, correct? Because it's only if A doesn't, isn't met.
Absolutely.
Okay, so those are the five, five points?
The only concern I have is at some point, family leaves, it's not going to become a rental unit.
No.
Because that is, that's apartment size, that's, someone would be looking for something that big, so.
Okay. I'm not sure they can. I thought, I thought I read in our ordinance.
You're not supposed to. That's best, right.
It's not rental.
I know.
Allow for the zone.
Nope. If it wasn't for family, I wouldn't be here. Trust me.
I think we can put a stipulation on it.
Not here.
Yeah, so that can't be a rental.
You can do that.
Yeah. Put a stipulation on it?
That can't be used as a rental.
Yeah. That's all I had. I think otherwise, everything made sense.
Okay. Would you all, uh, would you like to do a full vote out?
Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Um, in the case of, um, 05202024-1, uh, make a motion to accept the zoning variance, um, from LZO Article 507, Section 507.04B, to construct an ADU of 1,400 square feet or 1,500 square feet where an ADU can be no more than 800 square feet. No?
You don't need to?
What, this, the stipulation? What? We don't have to?
I'm just going to question the board about adding conditions that are not legally possible or appropriate.
Okay.
So, okay, so that's, he just read it, but he didn't add the condition yet.
I didn't add a condition.
He didn't, he didn't add a condition.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just mentioning, I don't want to. Wait, good?
Yeah. Okay, do we vote? All in favor?
All in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote carries 300.
Vote carries 300.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Sorry, Renee.
Thank you.
Renee, you know what, you know what happens here, right? We have, um, we have a leader, and she's, we all got nervous when she said she was stepping down.
Exactly.
Yes.
Well, I needed this to get the.
Yes, yes, just.
Yes. Hey Renee, don't stop for 30 days.
What's it, what worries you? Uh, how soon will I get to you? Because I need to apply for that afterwards.
Yep, I'll get that to you within 48 hours.
Gentlemen, everybody, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Kevin, get home, pour your supper burns.
I'm sorry.
That was funny.
You're like, you're like, oh, we got.
Yeah, I'm very, you had to recue yourself on the first one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hey, you got it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Ready?
Sure.
All right, who made that motion, so I can?
I did.
You did.
Zach made it. And who seconded it?
I did.
You did.
Oh. And that was three, and there was no conditions on that?
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to move to case number 05202024-2, variance from LZO Article 310 to construct a structure within 50, within the 50 feet building setback from the front property line in a residential district. Michael Valucci is the applicant, and the owner is Michael and Christine Valucci, 6 Mulberry Lane, Litchfield, New Hampshire, map 8 lot 175. And who will be presenting?
My name is Michael Turcot, and my colleague of mine, his name is Josh Stratton as well.
Your name was the answer?
Mike Turcot, sorry about that.
And you are here representing the applicants?
Mike, yep. Mike and Christine are sitting right over my left shoulder, so.
All right.
Give me like two seconds to get my.
Take your time.
Good evening, members of, uh, the zoning board. My name is Mike Turcot. My colleague, Josh Stratton, is with me here today. We represent Turncycle Solutions, and our client is Mike and Christine Valucci. We're here to present our proposal for a house extension at 6 Mulberry Lane in Litchfield. Um, the reason or the necessity for the variance, uh, is the compliance would be, um, would be possible if it was not a corner lot. Uh, given the circumstance of this particular lot, it's on the corner of, uh, Fox, I'm going to draw a blank, sorry, right, Foxwood Lane and Mulberry. So it puts it at two fronts, a 50-foot setback on each side, so there is no true side yard except for on one. Um, the property being a corner lot prohibits the client's ability to effectively meet the compliance of the zoning regulations. Um, if it was one addressed left or one addressed right, it would be in total compliance and would be in like kind to their neighborhood. Current garage does not meet the current parking requirements for the homeowner. The client has an undue hardship due to the restrictions of inventory and housing market and the ability to build this, uh, projected garage. Neighborhood would not be impacted in a negative manner, as the construction to this home would actually enhance the adjacent home's value. Uh, the client's proposed addition would not increase additional traffic to the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. The client has set roots for their family and would like their children to attend public schools in town. And we have, uh, two supporting letters from, uh, neighbors, uh, in support of the construction. Um, from 3 Mulberry Lane, um, they're just writing to say that, we're writing to support Mike and Christine's plan, uh, for their home in 6 Mulberry Lane. We have been neighbors of theirs for over 10 years. They've been wonderful, and please don't hesitate to contact us in regards to this matter. Um, please accept this, uh, letter as support for construction plans for Christine and Mike's, uh, property plans at 6 Mulberry Court. I live near them, they've always been, uh, great neighbors, and I have no objection to their plans moving forward. And this is from 2 Berry, 2 Mulberry Lane. Uh, obstruction concern, uh, specifically, this lot is, uh, at the corner, as I indicated previously, on Mulberry and Foxwood Lane. Uh, it has a, um, stop sign just past the, I can kind of point to it if you'd like.
Sure.
So there's a stop sign here. This is already a wooded lot, as it is, so there's no additional obstruction, because the garage is actually behind you at the corner. Um, and, uh, while I'm standing here, I'll kind of talk about, uh, a couple of other things. So, it, our ability to build any place outs on the lot is actually restricted due to, uh, the fact that we would need a curb cut, we have a septic, we have a, uh, distribution power line overhead, so the cost of construction and ability to actually build it would be almost impossible, and it really is the only location on the property that we can see effectively.
Sure, where the, um, the current driveway is on that plan?
This is where the current driveway is, yes.
Where the orange is? No, that's where the garage is going to be, right? Where's the?
So the driveway actually comes straight at the property on the side.
Okay.
So, so you're building the garage where, or you're building the addition where the curb cut is?
In front of it, yes.
So what's the elevation change between the, um, road and the existing, um, garage?
Uh, if I understood your correct, your question is that from the street, how high is the peak of the garage?
No, the floor.
That's right.
Um, I don't have that information.
Because that, there's a, there's a hill that goes up. It is, it ramps up. So it's going to be at the same plane as which the existing garage, if you've driven up to it, it will stay on that same plane, just coming forward towards you.
Okay. Oh.
Do you like me to continue on, or do you have additional questions?
No, you can continue.
Okay.
Just pulling up the map, so we.
So, in conclusion, our proposal for the, the house extension on 6 Mulberry, um, meets all other local zoning regulations, and it ensures minimal disruption to the community and neighborhood. We, we believe that this project represents a thoughtful and compliant addition to our client's home, enhancing it functionally, while the value is respecting the character of the neighborhood and will allow Mike and Christine to stay in Litchfield. I thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to take your first question.
Can you just go through some of the five points in a little bit more detail?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, so the, the uniqueness of this lot is that it's, kind of faces both roads.
That's literally, it's, it's actually, uh, in my personal home, I have the same situation, and I went to build a three-stall garage, and I had to go to zoning myself, and we had to determine basically what the town allowed me to do, and in my town, is that we basically picked a side and what was the front. Because it's, uh, it's a rounded corner, not an intersection, is really what it comes down to, is a formality.
So, if I'm right, this, the back side of the addition is 59 feet, almost 60 feet, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir.
And the side is 36, front is 36 now, but the side of the garage comes in off Mulberry?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, better said, if the house were to be, the front would be called Foxwood Lane, I would have a side setback on the Mulberry side, which I would, with this addition, would be in compliance with.
Yeah.
And then on the adjacent side of the lot, I would obviously have 20 feet, and then off the rear, I would have just the same. So I meet all the restrictions, it's just the formality of what is the front, is what I would say.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going to, yeah.
And so, in my personal situation, that was what I deemed similar type lot. Um, and we deemed Woodcrest Court, in my particular, particular case, was the true front, and that allowed, um, the side yard compliance. Because otherwise, there is, this is 100% compliant build. It's just the formality of the lot, its construction.
So, so it's basically 60 by 36?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And there's already an existing garage there?
There is, yes, on the building.
And that's going to stay a garage?
Um, I don't have that answer at the moment, sir. I'm happy to lean back and ask if you would like.
It's just, it's.
If it's pertinent.
So I have a, so, I mean, that's a lot of garage. I mean, what are you storing there? Is this, is this for a business?
No, sir, no. Yeah, our, our client enjoys, uh, cars and likes to park his stuff inside, um, due to the nature of the vehicles that he drives.
Okay.
I got a, I got a pickup truck, and I want to be able to walk all the way around it, so.
No, I, I have a.
No, I love the question.
I have, I have a decent side garage, but not, not this big. Um, so, um, so, um, my one concern, well, I don't, I don't say that until we get into.
Yeah, we. You should, um. Laura, you are good with the, I think Laura's trying to get to this piece prep.
It's not working. Um, it's not working. So, does the board have any questions for the applicant before we open it up for public input?
I don't at this time.
So, well, let me just double check. So, you don't know if there's, I, I guess I'd like to know if that other garage is going to stay as a garage, so.
Yeah, it's going to stay as a garage, build rooms above. Um, we have a, we're expanding our family, and we need more space, so the, the space we need a, above is, um, how do I explain it correctly? You could probably explain it better.
Above the garage?
Yeah.
Would be, um, a master bedroom, and we would, right now, our dining room is our playroom, so we don't have a dining room.
Okay, so, so this is a, this is not just a garage, it's a garage plus living space above. So it's a two-story?
That's correct, yes.
Yep. Okay. So, okay, and so, so, okay, so that's two-story. Okay, so that other garage is going to stay a garage. So, so that's going to, 21.
So we can see it, but it's, that's not bringing me to where I want to go.
Oh, is, is that what you wanted to see?
I'm trying to get to it, and I'm not able to, because this computer's not.
It's terrible.
Do you know how to put it? I'm trying to take that little guy, so we can actually view the property.
We could just go to Zillow. Or Google Maps. Does anyone want me to do that for you?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. So, that, that's a good thing. Okay, so hold on a second. And it's 6 Mulberry?
6 Mulberry, yeah. All right, so, no questions for the applicant? All right, so I'm going to.
I have no questions for the applicant.
I'm going to open it up for, uh, public input. Is there anybody in favor of the application who would like to speak? Is there anybody in opposition to the application who would like to speak? Anybody with questions?
I'd like to say something about the ADU thing in life, it's a big thing, this is coming up in every single town.
State your name, please.
Uh, excuse me, it's Kevin Lynch, 312 Charles Van Graaff Highway. I want to raise here, I'm also a father, um, but the ADU is a big thing of the fu, the future. It's hard dealing with, I still work part-time as a building inspector in zoning, and I, uh, I find that it's more and more, and I can see it happening because the housing costs are horrendous. So, and then we do, you've got enough land area to do it on and still make it look like it's a single family home, you know?
Are you able to get?
What, what do you mean, 900?
No ADU.
Oh, this is the right one. I don't want there to be confusion.
I'm sorry, but the ADU.
Okay.
I understand.
Case that we're making there. I just want to be. It's the existing garage, so they're going to come out at this level with that.
Okay.
So, I'll show you. So, this, this is the picture of your house, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can't see it.
If you go, if you go another click to your left.
Kevin, you've been to our house a long time.
Need to go left?
Yeah, if you just, yep, just a scooch. Whoa, there you go.
Okay.
That's a better picture. So basically, the structure is going to come forward down towards the driveway, but the topography will stay up at that height.
So if I was looking at that driveway right now, what would the length of that driveway be? Your guess would?
But they're now going to come 22 feet from the road, right?
Well, yeah.
It's going to be 22 feet off the road once complete.
So this is a.
That's not off the road.
Oh, yeah, you are correct, thank you.
Yeah.
I would be totally guessing. I mean, but I would assume probably 60 feet from the, from the road.
So I missed the part, so the existing garage is, what's happening to it?
It's intact.
So you're going to have two garages?
Just getting bigger. Expansion, garage.
So you're?
There are garages.
So the garage is staying, they're adding to it this way? So that garage that you see?
So it's still going to be a two-car garage coming in?
I'm going to give you, it, it will be two or three doors. The, the thing that we have not designed at this time is the orientation in which the doors will face. So either the door that, the two doors that you're looking at now will either be a gable end, and you're entering from, uh, the backside or the rear of the yard into the garage underneath. Does that make sense?
It's just going to come significantly more.
Yeah, but it's going to, you're going to come in from the backside of the garage and go underneath.
That's correct. So, but I guess what I would say is.
So if you're going up, up the garage, up the, uh, to the house, you'll go up to the house, go to the left, and pull into the garage underneath, and there'd be a second floor in the garage that would probably match the roof line that's there.
That's correct. Just beneath it is the goal.
So you're adding additional pavement all in the back that's not there?
So.
There's no, um, there's nothing that says in any of our zoning that we can't pave right to the line?
No, but you got to worry about runoff and stuff to your neighbor's property.
Absolutely.
Right. So, but, so my question is, you're adding all that additional previous area in the back?
It has not been, I guess, once approved or denied, we would make that, that change if it was necessary to meet the building, uh, requirement. So in my experience in the past, and it's different in every town, so just from my perspective.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's all, it's, it is paved at this time?
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the survey, I still think we might need to do a touch model, Mike, just for clarification. So I don't want to speak out of turn and say it's a certain size. It is helpful, I appreciate the input. My, in my experience in going to zoning before, it, you're looking for the specific blocks and does it comply with that? I'm happy to talk about the aesthetic detail if necessary.
Well, part of it is, you know, the character of the neighborhood, you know, if you're going to have a lot that has significant amount of pavement, that could also.
Oh, definitely. And aesthetically, I mean, I can tell you, from the client's perspective, they want to keep it in like kind. They want to stay where they live, they like their neighborhood, it's quiet. The intention is just to make space for them to park cars and allow their growing family to stay where they live, period.
And on your plan, it looks like you have some type of curbing, like this little line in the back. What is that representing? Is that, like landscaping curbing?
Retaining wall?
Oh, we have a retaining wall up around the back.
The left side.
So, so that's.
That's retaining.
I know, that's a retaining wall.
Yes.
Did you put those lines? Did you put those lines on there?
No. Oh, you mean these?
Yeah, these pins?
Yeah, these little pin lines.
Oh, did you?
I wasn't sure that the, uh, looking at what they have and what they were saying, this is where you would enter.
Yep, to the back.
The curb cut is here now. We just see the curb where you would come in through the back, or come in through this way. We just see the curb where you would come in through the back or come in through this way.
So looking at the property from the street-
Which we're doing here.
Yes. The aesthetic change is gonna be so nominal. From you looking at it from the street, it is not a wide-open field lot where you're gonna see this structure and it's gonna be massively impacted. If you look at the way that the property is, just for reference. Well, there's some trees that's thin-dow.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask where it's coming from.
We will have to, uh, remove a couple in our houses. And there's, there's some of it's been thin-dow. This is relevant in picture, but I'm just giving you some perspective, I don't like to hide or anything.
Most of those trees are actually gone.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I guess I'll hold my input later.
Can you go down a little bit that road so we can see the house from the other side?
I was trying to, yeah.
Is that just me?
It did drive, sometimes Google Earth will only drive as far as, yeah.
There we go. Let's see, there's a house there.
And most, a lot of these trees are gone right now, I believe, right?
Yeah, that's correct, it's been thin-dow, a lot.
So, this, this, um, thirty-six by sixty, um, that's like twenty-one hundred, almost twenty-two hundred square foot. And now if they do two floors, so that'll, they'll be adding forty-eight hundred, or forty-
Forty-two hundred.
Forty-two hundred square feet.
I don't think you guys are close public input, do you?
Uh, no, we haven't.
You did ask for it.
No, we asked for it.
Oh, we did ask for it, okay.
We haven't, um-
If you wanna comment, sure, just, you, you name an address?
Corey Flynn, one-two-three, help us. When you build a garage in your car back, you build the biggest garage you can afford. And not just, you obviously want a big garage because you're always filling somewhere. So, you know, and I'm a little jealous, the garage is bigger than my garage.
I can tell you, yours is bigger than mine and I got some cool stuff too.
I already, I'm already thinking about having one of mine, so, um, just because it's a big garage, doesn't mean it's gonna be a business or it's gonna be something else, but, you know, it's very nice to have a place to park your cars and work on it in, out of the rain.
But she has a requirement that the garage has to be paved.
Okay. But if you, if you cruise that neighborhood, like, the aesthetic look and detail of the property is not to be changed. We're, we're not building, uh, a tower with an elevator for cars, we're building like what the rest of the neighborhood is.
Do you know how far the existing garage is from the, uh, front setback line?
Are you, uh, from the Mulberry side?
Yes, yep. So the existing garage, where is that in relation to the, I'm assuming, here's the building setback line?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
Is it right at the building setback or is it further away from the building setback? So the existing condition?
Yes, okay. So, I gotta assume it's fifty feet, it is inside of the existing-
No, I, I'm assuming it is, but is it like right at the line, do you know?
It's pretty much right at the line. Twenty-four, twenty-four garage, I would, is my presumption.
Yeah, I mean, cause this is, yeah, we got fifty-nine.
Yep.
So it's close to the, the fifty-foot setback, okay.
And I go back to the point saying is that if, if this was a true front, this would not, we would not be before you today. And that's really the undue hardship for the client in this situation. So, before you today, that's basically what I ask you to consider as you make your vote, is that at the end of the day, if this was one block, one, one house in either direction, this would not even be a discussion. We would have pulled the building permit and they would have built this three months ago and we would have been moved along.
So, there is a requirement for driveways cannot be more than a ten percent slope. If they move this all the way out to the top of that hill, they, they may be greater than ten percent slope.
If that's a condition of the zoning requirement, that would be expected of us in the building permit side.
I don't-
It's not in yet.
Yeah, I don't-
It's not in yet.
I, I, I don't believe that's true, um, because the slope on the house across the street from me, I don't even know how they get up there in the winter. Yeah, right, you're right, but I don't know how they do it in the winter.
We have a driveway order, so I, I-
Uh, just for clarification, I'm gonna just interject for a second, we're not changing the driveway. So if the current use is, is-
No, like, but you're shortening it, right, so-
But it doesn't change the slope.
Well-
That's what I was gonna say, sir, I, I don't mean to-
No, I, I know, but-
I appreciate your sentiment.
If they don't, if they don't change the current elevations.
Okay.
I don't-
I'm new.
You're, you're doing great, man.
Good question.
I'd rather you not, like, I'd rather you not be just rubber stamping and ask the questions and make it go, and ask the right stuff.
So, anybody else with public input? I think we finished that. Any questions from the board for the applicant?
Again, like I said, if we were one street and left or right, we wouldn't even be before you today.
I'll make a motion to close public input.
Wait, wait, no, no, I'm not ready, nope.
Nope.
So I do, so we do have a slope easement here that you have the corner of the garage going into and you cannot do that. So you'd have to push that back. Um, no matter what, you can't be building into the slope easement.
Understood.
See right there, that little corner, can't go in.
Yeah.
Understand that and we can make that amendment.
Do you guys know what I'm talking about?
Hmm, I see it on the plans now.
So we could put as a stipulation?
Well, I think because we have a plan showing it is, we, we can, if that's, yeah, no matter what, I mean, legally, he can't build in a slope easement, the town, but we don't want him building in there and then we have to go and tell him he has to take it out.
Okay. Not interested in that either, so I appreciate that.
And we had been working with Jeff on that and he was, I got some answers and then he-
Right, so, yeah, so you can't build in a slope easement.
Can I just interject? We do have a, um, residential driveway regulations and permit thing that states, you know, the slope requirement and-
Sure.
Just for the record that we do have regulations in town.
And do, do you wanna share them? Do you have them with you, in front of you?
But this would, uh-
No, um-
Oh, okay.
Well, I have it online.
Yeah.
You can find it online.
Sure.
But this driveway wouldn't change it.
Yeah, it wouldn't, yeah.
The driveway doesn't change.
Well, no, it will change. If he has to carry his existing height all the way out to the edge of the road, um, to, to twenty-two feet, he's now going to be going over a shorter distance in order to get to the height of the driveway. So, for example, here, let me just-
Yep, um, now I'm interested.
Okay, so, if this driveway comes from all the way to here now, so he's gotta carry this height out to here, so he's now steeper here because he's carrying this elevation out to, to, about, about here. So, that is now going to be steeper for the shorter period of-
Is the regulation, uh, as it reads, ten percent of grade?
Yes, grade, yeah.
From the street?
Max, it just says maximum grade for driveways is ten percent. If, I don't know if it's enforced or not, um-
I, I can, like, just provide some feedbacks from my past experience and it doesn't mean that it is, uh, I'm not ripping up the driveway and past experiences that we've been involved in, it has not been something that we've changed. If we touch anything to do with the driveway and it was thirty-foot curb cut originally, then the city will make us go back to twenty-four or whatever it is. But in my past experience in dealing with this exact situation, that has been the case, is, um, that driveway has that slope, that's the intent, it has the curb cut.
Do you say you're on private well on septic or are you municipal well?
Yep. Uh, it is, is it private well? Private well, Mike. Cause it's, it's city and then septic, right?
Which, yeah, I don't know if it's city.
Yep.
Nope, nope. Not true. Not true.
And where is the, is, did we-
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering, where is the, uh-
Where's the septic?
Where is the septic? Is that in the front of the house?
It's right in the front. If you were to walk out that front door, pretty much should-
Septic and then leach field.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Be someone here.
So, you can use the arrow keys to go down to it.
For such a big lot.
If you click, once you click, it'll go down.
Cause half of it's a pizza pie, it can't build in the pizza, bottom of the first bite of the pizza, right?
They take a lot of the setback out of it and lots really actually small. I wish it was, uh, some type of scale on that Google map.
I, I know, I-
Cause now you got me, uh, thinking about the, uh, slope.
Well, you can, if you go back to the NRPC, you can measure it. But this thing is hot, the computer's horrible.
Oh, this thing's terrible.
Yeah, um, this, this one?
Yep, you can measure that, do you know how to do the measuring tool?
I've never seen this before.
Sorry.
Can I actually make one interjection just for a second? So, um, Josh was just bringing it up to me, which makes a real relevant point. So, if you look at the way that that is, there's already twenty-four things coming off the existing structure. So we're not coming truly sixty more feet off the bill.
No, you're actually coming-
Twenty and change off the billing. I just wanna be clear on that, cause I don't want that to get misconstrued in the, in the-
It's only twenty feet more off of the-
Are you, oh, so the drawing, the-
The drawing shows fifty-nine feet, but that encases the old garage.
So I have seventy-one feet.
Yeah, that's what I, he was just, you know, so-
So seventy-one feet, so the garage is really only twenty feet longer than what's existing there.
Depending on if you measure it from the-
It's a little over twenty.
The longer part of the triangle or the-
Well, that's, I'd be saying, the issue is the property was set at such a funky angle that if it was straight in one direction or the other, it, we would, none, none of these, none of this would be a problem. Whereas a pizza pie.
So from the drawing, it looked like, um, you were keeping-
I understand your interpretation now better and, and that's why he mentioned that to me.
So, oh, I guess I, can I show it here?
What is the, what is the other corner of it?
So, so on this drawing, um-
That has the garage being eaten, the, the existing drug being absorbed into that existing structure.
Okay. Because you can see my confusion, cause there's a bump out in the, um, in the front of that, um, of the house and I thought the garage was already there.
That's the porch.
That's the porch of the house.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
No, so I, I thought, that's why I asked about the existing garage.
Oh, it's okay.
That makes it a little better.
It's, it's awkward because of the angle, right? So like, as we're designing this, that, that wall that is adjacent to the house is actually eating up a good portion of that garage.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant? Anything else you want to add for us?
No, thank you, I appreciate your time.
So we'll close public input?
I'd like to make a motion to close public input.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we're gonna deliberate on the five points, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, questions, concerns, comments initially?
My, my concern was the slope and how far it was gonna be coming out. If it's twenty feet less, um, or actually more than twenty feet less, cause it's probably a twenty-four-foot garage, then that alleviates my concern there. And it also recr, shrinks the, um, footprint and so the, the size of the house isn't double now. It's, so it, that works for me.
Anybody else have any comments before we get into some of the points?
Can we comment, I would like to make, I'd like to add a stipulation to the, um-
The motion, if it's granted?
The motion, if it's granted, that we do not, uh, impact the slope, the town's slope.
Understood.
Oh, the slope easement, you mean?
Slope easement, yes.
I do have concerns with the, the, um, addition. I do think it's, uh, has the potential to affect the character of the neighborhood, especially the way it's situated, sticking out front. Um, I do think that they could keep themselves within the setback and they could build back, into the back. We have a twenty-foot rear setback, so they have some ability to go to the back. It's thirty-six feet from the point of the house going down.
When you say the backside, do you mean here?
This side, yeah, so the rear, the side. So there's only a twenty-foot-
But this is the, uh, this is the neighbor's-
Yep, but I'm just saying, they can go back up to, there's a twenty rear setback.
And what do we have there? Thirty-six.
Over here, you got thirty-six, so they could go, they could go sixteen feet back.
I think there's, um, by looking at the uniquenesses of this piece of property, I think this is a slope right here. And that's why this is built up with a retaining wall.
That's correct.
So I think there's some uniqueness to that.
No, I'm not, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just talking about the character. I mean, I think this, the way it's situated and the look of the, the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
I do have concerns with the way this is positioned. I think it could be better served. I mean, they're gonna have to do greening all in here, no matter what, there's gonna be greening that needs to be done. They're not gonna stick that out there like that.
I think right now, the driveway, where the driveway comes up right now? They're making the option open right now so that they can put three doors on this side or keep this as two-door?
The other thing too is, obviously, the, the area that's there is already paved. We're trying not to make more impervious ground there if we can help it, so-
So the top of it-
Already paved.
I guess can we ask that question without opening back up?
What question do you wanna ask?
Uh, this, this whole area here is paved up above.
Right.
As, as it is now.
Mm-hmm.
So that, you're saying you'd like to move this back? You'd like, yeah?
And then you could still come that way? That's just me there.
So it doesn't stick out?
So I'm thinking the garage is here, yeah.
No, the garage, see this line? The garage is right here and see where my finger is, it's gonna end right there.
The new gar, uh, the-
The existing garage, so this is-
So that's there already?
So, so the existing garage, here's the fifty-foot building setback, it's like ten foot, so the existing garage ends where my finger is, approximately. So you're adding that much?
To, um, okay.
So, I do have concerns with, uh, the character, um, and I do have concerns with, um, them meeting criteria five with the lot being unique. I mean, I know it's a corner lot, but the board needs to be careful of that. Just because it's a corner lot doesn't mean it's unique. If that was the rationale, then every corner lot in the town would be unique and subject to receiving, uh, variances because it's a corner lot. So, those are my concerns. I think it's, it's big, uh, very big, they already have a garage, um, so that's what I got.
Well, and it's not just a garage, it's, it's a two-story, so they're, they're basically doubling the size of their house.
It becomes living space.
So it will, it probably will be the largest house in the neighborhood. Because no, no, no other house in that neighborhood really has a huge addition on it.
If I, if, am I still allowed to talk?
Sorry.
I mean, we could, we could drive down the, you know, but-
Yeah, no, no, I, I mean, I've seen enough, I'm fine, it's just, um, so we can go through the, uh, five points, but I do have concerns with, um, uh, criteria one and criteria five and potentially, uh, the values of surrounding property. Anybody else wanna add anything before we go through the criteria?
I think the one thing I'm worried about is, it is ver, really large and you already said the trees have been thin-dow and you're taking out more. If, and they specifically state that the trees would be there to impede the-
The conversations with the board.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, so I am worried about that.
Alright, are we ready to go through?
Sure.
Alright, so-
Do you wanna vote on these, uh?
We can just go through it and then at the end, it's, it's kinda six and one, half doesn't know the other, however. Um, so, we'll go through, um, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the applicant stated the garage will not negatively impede neighbors' views to their property due to the elevation of the property as well as the average of the garage will not further impede traffic or drivers' views. So that was their response. I think granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest. Part of the rationale for public interest is altering the character of the neighborhood. I do have concerns with the addition, how it's laid out that it would alter the character of the neighborhood. Anybody else have any thoughts?
That was my initial thought.
Good.
Okay. Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. They have the garage will not negatively affect any neighbor's views either to or from the property. As the board is aware, one and two are intertwined. I think we have the fifty-foot setback for safety reasons as well as for aesthetics from the roadway. So I would reiterate my concerns for, that I just said for one, for me, that would apply for two as well. Thoughts? Substantial justice is done. This is a balance and act between the gain to the public and if it outweighs the benefit to the owner, I would think that the application fails on three as well. There's, the property owner has an existing garage. They have ability to build in the back if they wanted to. So I think with that, the property owner is not as a loss as, well, their loss isn't as great to the gain to the public to keep that fifty-foot setback intact.
Are there's area to build?
The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. There's been, the applicant said the garage will not be visible from the street due to the presence of trees. The additional parking provided by the garage will add value to the existing structure, thus improving the value of surrounding homes. Can you go back to the picture where we see the driveway?
Those trees are mostly thinned in that area. Cut down.
So I think.
No, it's hard to drive.
That's fine. Yep, that's right.
No, I know.
What are people's thoughts on that? I feel like I've been doing all the talking.
I don't think it would necessarily diminish the surrounding property's values, but I just. I think it would increase values due to increasing the value of the house itself.
It, it, it depends on, you know, the size of it and maybe the person at the end of the street, you know, will be looking straight at it. Their property may be diminished. It, it will be the largest house, I think.
No, and I have, for me, I would say that the application fails on that as well because I think putting a structure like that could potentially decrease property values. Five, literal enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. For the purpose of this, so for the property use is a reasonable due to the presence of existing trees, the addition of the garage has no negative effect on the aesthetics of the neighborhood. For the same reason, the addition of a garage does not have a negative effect on the drivers who are traversing the intersection. The first thing for this criteria is we have to say what is unique about this property? That would distinguish it from others in the area that would necessitate or lead us to granting the variance. I don't believe there's anything here that's making me feel that this property is unique. Anybody have any thoughts? And the prop, the proposed use is a reasonable one. They already have a garage. This is basically another house that's encroaching into the setback, given the size, so I would say it is not a reasonable use. That's me. Any other discussion? Then I'm gonna make.
So you're saying they could build a garage there that would be almost the same size if they just moved it around?
Am I able to just, no, I can say.
Nope, can't.
Can't talk to me, sorry.
The uniqueness of this lot though shows that they can't build it anywhere in that lot that size. Right? Because of the envelope?
It's, but all corner lots have that envelope.
That's the uniqueness.
Because of the curb cut too.
Anything else? All right, I am going to make a motion in case number zero-five-two-zero-two-zero-two-four dash two to deny the applicant's request for a variance from LZO article three-ten to construct a garage within fifty-foot of the building setback from the front property line in a residential district. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
So you got three ones, so. Thank you.
Am I able to ask questions now or no? Not at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the next case is case number zero-five-two-zero-two-zero-two-four dash three. A variance from LZO article three-ten to construct a structure within the fifty-foot building setback from the front property line in a residential district. Vincent and Catherine Lamanga, owners and applicants, Thirty-Six Woodhawk Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire, map eight, lot eighty-eight. And who will be presenting?
Hi, good evening, my name is Vincent Lamagna, this is my wife Kathy Lamagna, we live at Thirty-Six Woodhawk Way. I'm requesting this variance because my parents sold their house with the idea that I was gonna be able to put an ADU on. I was originally told by Jeff Blackwell that we were good and then he came back later, as in the Friday before this had to be filled in, and told me that we had five per variance. Can I read off the points?
Yes, please.
Okay. Variance is requested from section three-ten dot zero-zero zoning ordinance for the following reasons. Variance form from LZO, LZO article three-ten dot zero-zero, section three-ten dot zero-zero to encroach seven feet into the fifty-foot front setback for the construction of a two-car garage with living space above. Back supporting this request, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the improvements to the home and property will have no effect on the public interest. The improvements will beautify the property, maintain the single-family dwelling aesthetic. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the original structure should be grandfathered as it was built prior to the implementation of the ordinance. The original structure was built in nineteen-seventy-six and the current addition was built in nineteen-eighty-five per town records before the existence of the current ordinance. Additions to the structure will not be placed any closer to the road than the current structure. Number three, substantial justice is done because my elderly parents have sold their house out of state and wish to move in with my family. The existing structure is outdated and small for family and in-laws. Improving the property also improves the neighborhood. Number four, the values of the surrounding properties are not diminished because the improvements will beautify the existing structure and property. There is no effect to, on the neighbors, no views are blocked and the surrounding homes are not close enough to this property be affected. The improvements increase curb appeal to the neighborhood. Number five, literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in the necessary hardship. Conforming to section three-ten zero-zero would push the addition backwards and encroach on a steep hill that runs the length of the property. This property is intended to be used, used as and will continue to be used as a single-family residence. Its proximity to the road has no bearing on its use. I was not able to attach pictures due to the nature. I guess I'd have found out at three PM on Friday that I had to have this in by four PM on Monday. I did take some pictures of my iPad of the driveway and the surrounding area if you guys would like to view those. And I believe you guys have copies of everything that was submitted so far.
I'm gonna see if we can pull it up on.
Sure. At the bottom. Right there.
Are we able to get the other, like, the Google map one too?
Sure, hold on.
So as it is, this is gonna be bumped back a little bit from where the current garage is?
Yes, the, the way my property line is, it's, it's a curve on the end of Woodhawk Way there. So the existing house, which is the structure on the far right, is approximately forty-three feet back. The tip of the garage on the left-hand side is approximately forty-one feet back. So we bumped it back two feet to give us, to stay in line with that curve. And then that's when we found out that we were encroaching in the fifty-foot.
So. Right now, the existing garage is actually in the fifty-foot setback?
Correct, the entire house is.
Yeah.
And when I pulled the town records on when the addition was put on, I found out that that was put on before the record was even made for the setback.
House was built in what year?
It was built in seventy-six and then the addition was put on eighty-five. I thought the addition was much later, but.
It's the house.
So.
So there's a breezeway between the house and the garage, right?
It's classified as a breezeway, but it's all, it's all connected inside the house. There's no, no doorways there. It's all open.
So what's gonna happen to the existing garage doors? Because it looks like you're putting the addition on.
Yeah, so. I'm planning on putting the addition two feet back from this corner across here, so these doors will then be placed here. It's approximately twenty-six by twenty-six is the plot plan. I'm planning to move my wood shop out of the basement up to the garage where I don't have to move tools around all the time to use a tool. And there's also gonna be part, part of that garage is gonna be a stairwell that is gonna be increased in width so that in the case that my parents, you know, become wheelchair accessible or something like that, I can put a stair lift in for them as well.
So you're not going to have garage doors?
I will, they will be in the front. They'll be straight up the top of the driveway.
Okay. You're gonna go into, through the.
Yeah, we're basically just taking it, turning it this way.
The existing garage?
Mm-hmm.
But it'll be setback because it's.
Yeah, setback approximately two feet. Not sure which drawings you have.
Is the woodshed on that, uh?
No, there is a woodshed there. It's approximately right here. If you go to the top of Google Maps, you'll see that woodshed. I actually have to take that down, it's mostly down now. Here's a copy of the proposed plan, they're not final, that is just the idea. And in there, we show this is what the front will look like. This is the approximate two feet pushback and allowing the building structure to be placed there.
Okay.
Can we double this, pass it down, please?
Yeah, the existing woodshed is literally just timbers right now, I still have to rip those out of the ground.
Okay, so if I, if, if I'm looking at this right, can I just see this here? So you're gonna build this here where the driveway is now?
And we did marker it out, once we found out that we had to have the fifty-foot setback, just to see how far it goes. And the hill behind my house steers pretty, pretty much, pretty deep right there. So it would, it would be a hardship to try to build into that and try to reassure that and everything else.
So this right here, if you're looking at that.
So the garage.
This is the breezeway.
That's, yeah.
This is the existing garage.
That they're building up.
And then this is gonna be built back.
Yeah, so that's a little bit off because it looks like this is.
Yeah, absolutely. And you see where the car is right there? That's exactly where the addition is. You pull straight up the driveway into the garage doors.
This is visually, it should be flipped.
Yep. Yeah, because you're looking at the front view of it, you're, it's gonna go straight back.
Yeah, so I'm thinking.
It'd be a lot easier to park into it versus turning into that garage.
So the ADU apartment stairwell.
It'll have three points of ingress and egress. You'll have an exterior to the left that'll be a covered porch leading up to a porched-in area that will lead into the main part of the house. You'll have an egress point in the back side of the house that'll lead out to the backyard. And then there'll be an interior stairwell that we're modifying from the existing one, from the current garage, up to that area with a common, small little room that leads to all points of the, the house and the addition.
Did you get six-seventy-six?
I did, that's what I was just doing.
It's, yeah, it's six-seventy-six and then I'm, I'm taking part of my existing house and putting in the closet and, and stuff like that. So it's, it's under the eight hundred.
How many square feet is it?
Uh, it's six-seventy-six is the build plan, but then we're adding in the garage and everything like that. It's under eight hundred.
And I'm not concerned as to whether or not it's an ADU or not, it's just an addition. Because he's not here for any relief for an ADU.
Yeah, he's here for just the fifty-foot, yeah.
So he could use that for whatever he wants to use it for.
Yep. Well, yes and no.
Well, if it was, I mean, right now, I mean.
I think, are you trying to do an ADU?
Yes, the intention was is to build an ADU for my parents.
But he's not here, he's touching relief for the ADU requirements. He's there requesting relief from a setback.
Yes.
Okay, I, I just want.
Oh, yeah, you don't know, I get it.
It was just a setback was the issue.
Yeah, no, we're good.
Originally, I was told measure from the edge of the road and then we found out that it's between the two markers and that, yeah, that became fun.
And people always think their property line goes to edge of pavement and the town usually has a right-of-way from the edge of pavement. And usually like ten feet or so, that's the town they use for drainage or.
Plus the, the curve that it's on, the road gets very wide there, so it was trying to figure that out. And when the surveyor came out and measured all the points and all that, that's when he figured it out.
What is the setback off the road?
Fifty.
Currently to the corner of that garage is forty-one feet.
What's, what is the right-of-way?
The, the regulations, it's fifty.
Yes, but what is the right-of-way from ten?
Oh, we don't know. It's usually like ten to twenty-eight, depends on.
Or is it thirty-five feet from the center of the road or something like that?
Hope I never have to build a garage.
That's what we tried to figure out. It's like seventy-five feet from the center, fifty from the edge, but realistically, it's fifty feet from that arc. That's what we found out.
Usually right-of-ways are fifty feet wide, but then the actual roadway is smaller to give that side for drainage.
There was a lot of math involved in this.
So what's behind the house?
Nothing. It's just trees. So this is a picture going towards my backyard, which just shows the fenced-in yard and you can see the hill. And then this is just further back there.
So that's, that's the slope that you see that's all the fill area?
Yeah, yeah. I already had some trees removed because they were impeding on my house and I don't want a tree in the house. I have one more that I have to remove.
Do you have any other pictures of the backyard?
Not really, I just took pictures of the slope. No, just those. I might have some other pictures on my phone.
Do you know what the distances of that elevation drop-off is from the back of the house now?
To the, to the very bottom.
No, from the, from the house to the top of the slope?
From the street to the top?
No, from the back of the house now. From, say, here to where the drop-off is, the slope on the backside? Do you know what the distance is?
To where the edge where we're building?
Yeah.
Six to ten inches. If we go, if we go six or ten inches further back though, then we start getting into feet as a drop.
Okay.
This marker here was if we don't get the setback, then we have to build out to there. And as you can see, it drops dramatically quickly.
Unstable ground.
Yeah.
Well, there's a good view of the house, front of the house.
I was gonna say, if you do the bird's eye above it, you'll be able to see. It's just, it's just trees and, trees and slope back there. Right now, it's a pond.
It's a pond?
Yeah, all the rain we've had and everything else.
Wonderful.
Well, you have wetlands in the back of your property.
We do, we, I was concerned about the wetlands because I thought they started right there. And then when they went out and surveyed, we realized the wetlands is actually in the very back of the property, so we're nowhere near that.
Back left, yeah.
But you do have a wetland buffer setback.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. We checked that and we're clear on that as well.
There's a game store there.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does little mini figurines and stuff like that, side hobby.
Anybody have any other questions for the applicant before you go to public input?
I don't have any more questions, no.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for public input. Is there anybody in favor of the application that would like to speak? Come on up. Do you reside in Litchfield?
No, we don't, we've come from New Jersey.
Okay.
But now we reside in Litchfield.
Okay, can you just state your name and address?
Helen and Dennis Lamagna, Thirty-Six Woodhawk Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire.
And you're speaking in support of the application?
Pardon me?
And you're speaking in favor of the application?
Absolutely.
We both are.
I, I got that, okay. Thank you. Did you want to say anything else or just say that, is that all you want to say?
There's a wonderful couple up here, we're looking forward to living next door with them.
So he can take care of us in our old age. I'm not there yet.
Anybody else in favor, sir, you had your hearings?
I'm at Thirty-Four Woodhawk, I'm the board game store.
Okay. And your name and address was?
Eric Olson, Thirty-Four Woodhawk Way.
Eric Olson, Thirty-Four Woodhawk, in, in favor of the application?
In favor, yes.
Okay.
I think my neighbors should be able to build that or really anything they want. I don't think it's any of my business to, or really anybody else's to tell them what they can build on their own property. I think it's in the public interest that people who own property get to decide what to do with their property. So I fully support them building their expansion in whatever color they want.
Thank you. Anybody here in opposition to the application? Anybody here with questions about the application? Anybody here with questions about the application? Did you wanna respond to any of the public input?
Uh, just, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody have any further questions for the applicants? All right, can somebody make a motion to close public input?
I'll make a motion to close public input.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Anybody have any initial, uh, concerns, questions, comments?
I think since it keeps the same setback and, you know, it's, it's not changing, um, I think, you know, it works for me.
I think he did the best, uh, he could to keep it in line with the setbacks that already exist. Being that, um, the whole house sits in the current zoning boards or zoning setbacks, I think it's, it's, it's a good, uh, fit.
I agree, I think actually following the zoning regulation would make it look less appealing of a house in the neighborhood, because it would be jarring to see a house setback that's much farther.
All right, uh, we can go through the five points.
They're all in the appendix.
The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because, uh, he says the improvements to the home and the property will have no effect on the public interest, the improvements will beautify the property, maintain the single-family dwelling aesthetics. I agree, I don't think there's gonna be any change to the character of the neighborhood or that it's gonna alter.
Agreed.
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the original structure should be grandfathered as it was built prior to the implementation of the ordinance. The original structure was built in nineteen seventy-six, and the current addition was built in nineteen eighty-five per town records before the existence of the current ordinance. Additions to the structure will not be placed any closer to the road than the current structure. Anybody have concerns with that?
No.
All right, substantial justice is done. My elderly parents are selling their house out of state and wish to move in with my family. The existing structure is outdated and small for family and in-laws. Improving the property also improves the neighborhood. I appreciate that answer, but I don't think that answer is the right analysis. I do think they've met that, but again, number three is a balance and act between the loss of the property owner and the gain to the public. So here, the, the, the gain to the, the public's not losing anything, I don't feel that they're at a disadvantage because the existing structure is already encroaching. And, uh, addition is actually further back than that, so I think the loss to the property owner would be greater than the gain to the public.
Agreed.
So you met it, you just didn't say anything.
Yeah, these are tricky to answer.
Yeah, but I got you.
Catch tricky, yeah.
The values of surrounding properties are not diminished because the improvements will beautify the existing structure and property, there's no effect on the neighbors, no views are blocked, and the surrounding homes are not close enough to this property to be affected. The improvements increase curb appeal to the neighborhood. I would agree.
I agree.
Uh, number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in the unnecessary hardship. We have to first determine whether or not this property is unique, and, where is it? I would say that this property is unique because, um, the existing structures, um, were built already encroaching into the setback prior to the fifty-foot setback being in place. Um, we do have wetlands in the back, in addition to a steep slope in the area that, uh, we were able to see by photographs. So I feel that it is unique, and that, given that it's unique, it's not fair for the town to impose that fifty-foot restriction on the property.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Is there any conditions or anything that people would like to add in the event that the variance is granted? Besides as presented?
I don't have any. The presentation was fine.
So with that, I will make a motion in case number zero four two zero two zero two four dash three to grant the applicant's request from a variance from LZO Article three ten to construct a structure within the fifty-foot setback that is- How many feet did you say this is encroaching into the fifty-foot setback?
Seven feet.
Seven feet? What, to, uh, to encroach fif- seven feet, right? Into the fifty-foot building setback, um, for the construction of an addition?
I just wanna look at that one more time.
Make sure that's seven feet?
Make sure it's seven feet, yeah, exactly. Don't let it be eight feet.
Yeah, when, uh, when we measured everything out with the protractor and all that, it, the arc came right to, we originally thought it was forty-one, and it turns out to be forty-three that will be pushed back, so.
So it's two foot off the existing garage setback, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
It's that weird arc that makes it difficult.
Yep, agreed, I just wanna-
Seven feet, we said, right? Seven feet in, to encroach seven feet into the fifty-foot building setback for the construction of an addition as presented. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Welcome to, uh, New Hampshire.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I stay a little?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I have to have the chairman's permission.
Come on up.
I'm, I'm Dennis, I have business.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Very nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you.
You came from a beautiful state, too, though.
Yes, I did. Came from, uh, John Paul, Waterford, New Jersey, just outside of Atford, New Jersey.
Been there.
Between Berlin and-
Oh, have you?
Yep. Traveled all over New Jersey recently.
I worked with my own council board, baroness and committee of self-work, I like the way it does the business.
We're looking for members.
Yeah, we're looking for members.
Looking for members.
I'm over the hill, eighty, eighty-one.
That's okay.
That's okay, we're looking for members.
Come on, let's talk.
Great, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
All right, so we have approval of meeting minutes from twelve eighteen, two twenty, and four fifteen. I'm gonna hold off on those until John's here.
Yeah.
Forwards to do, so I'm gonna skip that, I keep, they put it down here, regional impact. I'm gonna make a motion that all three of the cases that we heard today were not of regional impact.
Okay.
Okay.
Agreed.
Somebody make a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we did that. Communication and other business, just we have our two new members, so, welcome, welcome.
So, do you have when all the members are up for?
Uh, reappointment?
Yeah.
I can get that for you, I don't have it handy, yeah.
Just curious.
So I think you and I are in twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Twenty, twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight.
Should be a three-year term for you.
Well, we're absorbing, there are-
They're slipping you in.
I, I'm a shorter, shorter term.
Oh, because they slipped you into somebody else's existing.
I think I was twenty twenty-eight, though.
Okay. All right, um, anything else from the members? So our next meeting is?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, June, um-
So I was not on the email distribution list, but, uh, Kim's gonna make sure I get added.
Okay.
So I didn't get any emails, knowing people are listening.
Uh, do you have a town email, though?
I do.
Okay, but you didn't get it through your town email?
Well, I think it's the ZBA distribution list that I use.
They just didn't slide me into it.
And Zach, you're all set with yours?
I got, I got everything, yes.
And everybody knows how to get the ZBA portal?
Yes.
So we have that, right?
I've been using it all night.
Okay, um, and typically, the building inspector is here, um, so-
Do we have an acting building?
Saw something by the interim inspector.
I know we were looking for one, I'm not sure if that has happened.
Should apply for that.
Well, one of them was signed, I thought, by the interim inspector.
Okay.
Yes, one of them was.
Something, yeah.
So I don't know if they're gonna let that building inspector sit at the meetings, and probably gonna take no just for cost reasons. Uh, but when we do get a building inspector hired full-time, they come to the meetings and they're very helpful. Jeff was very helpful, and, uh, you know, he was a great asset to the meetings, um, and then-
So if we can fix the HDMI adapter, um, I could drive a lot better with my own laptop. You know, this one doesn't work very well.
That was horrible.
In the future, maybe, you know, we'll have better AV.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was, that was very jumpy, that one. Anything else? All right, anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-three?
I will make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-three.
Anybody wanna second that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The meeting's adjourned at eight forty-three.
I think that gentleman wants to talk.
Yes and no, I mean, I, I, I came here hoping that I could just have some public inputting and ask for some relief on the zoning ordinances. I'm with-
My wife is putting on forty-two degree, and we're like, we wanted to put up some temporary signs on Albuquerque Avenue. I didn't understand how to file, uh, to be heard at the meeting. So, um, I guess what I'm looking for now is what's the process to get something like that put before the board?
I would go ask Kim Kleiner, and, uh, she would be the one that would direct it. I don't know if that's something that the board of selectmen can weigh in on.
According to her, it's you guys.
If it is, then, I don't know when our submission deadline date was for the June meeting, but we have a meeting in June seventeenth, so if you get, uh, something in by then, um, fill out the application, she should direct you, um, what section of the ordinance you're seeking relief from.
It's, uh, fifteen zero four, which shows only ordinances that states that, uh, there are no signs allowed at Albuquerque Avenue. We wanted temporary signs for, I, we were hoping for June fifteenth, but later, and then for the, for the fourth of July, our show, and then, uh, Erica Brady, and then, um, a two-day tour with the curfew.
So we can't really discuss it here, because it's not an application pending.
I understand, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that, so I think you're gonna need to go back to her, and she's gonna have to give you the application, and then would have to notice it and have a public hearing. You're welcome.
Which one was that, uh, what, did you say fifteen? Fifteen hundred signs.
Yeah, it's fifteen zero four, page ninety-five or six.
Forbidden signs.
Forbidden sign, three rep.
Yeah. We, we had, uh, fishing derby signs were taken down.
Bring it to the meeting. She took a copy and kept it, but-
Then I don't need it, I don't know why she, I would hold on to it so you know, too?
I, I am, I just, yeah, oh, March twenty-
And when are you excited?
March twenty-twenty-seven, I was wrong.
Okay, twenty-two, yeah, yeah.